Father God, once again, we come before you wonderful throne of grace and glory as we do every day, giving you prayers of thanksgiving and praise for the many mercies, blessings, and comforts of life you've provided each and every one of us. You're so kind and so generous to us. And Father God, secondly, we always pray for forgiveness for our sins because we do make our mistakes. And thirdly, Father God, I always pray for others. I pray for the sick, the distressed, the oppressed. Father God, you are the great healer, the great physician, you're the great counselor, you're the great comforter. Father God, you are our rock, our foundation, and our salvation. Now, thank you so much for being the one who provides the remedies to our needs. Now, Father God, as we engage in the business of this county tonight, give us the wisdom, the strength, the ability to make the best decisions for the citizens of this great county. Father God, all these things, I humbly pray in your name and in the name of your precious son, Jesus Christ, our risen Lord and Savior. Amen. Jordan Lee, in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Father Commissioners, you have to propose an agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I have a need for any change to the proposed agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. President. Uh, Ms. Chairman, I'm going to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second. Have a motion and a second and further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. You have in your packets the public information reports, the monthly collection report, and monthly financial report for your information. We also have a consent agenda. Do I need for any change to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there, are there any discussions? Here are none of those in favor of that motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay. The motion carries four to one. At this time, I want to open the floor for a public hearing relative to the Transportation Department regarding the fifty-three eleven admin and capital grant. Ms. Howell.
This is for fiscal year twenty-six transportation admin and capital grants, and I think you all have the paperwork.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this just basically breaks down the administrative piece of it and our local share and the combined capital, which is two replacement vans and the letter and logo for both of those vans, and then the local share for those as well.
Are there any questions? That information begins on page fifty, uh, twenty-four of our agenda package. Are there any questions? Do we receive any information from the public? Here are none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Do we need to take any action on that?
I believe that she would like a motion to approve it. Is that correct?
Oh, yes. I thought you were giving me the, yes, that it's okay. Yes.
Move to approve, move to approve the administrative capital grant, Ms. Chairman.
Have a motion for approval. Do I have a second, sir? Have a motion and a second and a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you.
I thought you were dismissing.
We have no one for public comments, so I turn it over to the county manager.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Just a few items for your attention this evening. Our first being a resolution honoring Robert P., Mr. Bob Aiken Jr. on his one-hundredth birthday and declaring September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four as Robert P. Aiken Jr. Day.
We approved that action at our last meeting, but we do have the resolution, so I'd like to read the resolution.
Sir, please.
Resolution of the Green County Board of Commissioners honoring Robert P. Aiken Jr., Bob, on his one-hundredth birthday and declaring September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four as Robert P. Aiken Jr. Day. Whereas, Robert P. Aiken Jr. was born on September the twenty-first, nineteen twenty-four, to Robert P. Aiken Senior and Rosalie Edwards in Snow Hill, North Carolina, and has spent the majority of his one hundred years in his beloved hometown. And whereas, Bob Aiken pursued his education at N.C. State University and King's Business College in Raleigh, where he developed an interest and skills in photography, a passion that would become his lifelong career and legacy. And whereas, upon returning to Snow Hill in nineteen forty-five, Bob joined his father at Aiken Cash Supply Company, a cornerstone of the community, where he also founded Bob Aiken Photography in nineteen forty-eight, capturing countless memories for residents across eastern North Carolina. And whereas, Bob Aiken has been a lifelong member of Calum Memorial United Methodist Church, contributing his talents and leadership to the choir and various committees, and serving as a pillar of the church community. And whereas, Bob Aiken was also a devoted family man. In nineteen forty-six, he married Sarova Anderson of Bailey, North Carolina, to whom he was married for sixty-four years. Together, they raised three children in Snow Hill, North Carolina. There are now five grandchildren and two great-grandchildren, with a third one due in January. And whereas, Bob Aiken followed in the footsteps of his father, becoming scout master of Troop Seventy-four, mentoring numerous young men in the Boy Scouts, some of whom have gone on to prominent roles in society. And whereas, Green County citizens have enjoyed Bob Aiken's photography for decades, and his work has become a treasure part of the community's history. These photographs will continue to be enjoyed by future generations, preserving the memories and milestones of countless families and events in the area. And whereas, Bob Aiken was given generously, has given generously of his time and talents to deliver meals on wheels and other community services, embodying the spirit of civic duty and neighborly care. He has also served Green County in numerous roles, including as a volunteer firefighter, treasurer for the school funds, and as a member of the North Carolina Professional Photographers Association, where he served as a past president. Additionally, he has been a member of the North Carolina Press Photographers Association, and has chaired regional campaigns for President Jimmy Carter, Governor Jim Hunt, Senator Robert Morgan, and Attorney General Rufus Edmiston. Bob also attended the Democratic National Convention when Jimmy Carter was nominated. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Green County Board of Commissioners hereby declares September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four as Robert P. Aiken Jr. Day in Green County, in honor of Bob's one-hundredth birthday and in recognition of his outstanding contributions to the community, his lifelong dedication to public service, and his role as a cherished and respected member of Green County. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Bob Aiken as a token of the community's deep appreciation and admiration for his century of life, service, and inspiration. Adopted this the sixteenth day of September, two thousand twenty-four. And this will be presented to Bob at a later date as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the three-plus-one software by Cash Fest. In short, this software will assist us in using our cash as efficiently as possible. It gives us a range of limited cash needed on hand at any given point based on trends. It'll allow us to maximize investment returns from our investment portfolio. It will select legal investment vehicles with the highest rates of return to place our investments in. It'll make our investment funds work most effectively for us. It is a very advanced cash management software. There are many functions. It's multifunctional. Are there questions?
I have one. This is a one-time fee. It was a stretch of it.
It's an annual fee. And again, the cost, which I tried to work on, is based on our budget size. This is a software being utilized by one other county in this state right now, and that's Jones County. And they have had a, a great response from this program, so... Any other questions? Anything I can help explain, understand?
Sounds good. Move to approve, Ms. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Now, if we don't, if they don't give us our money back, we don't pay them nothing, correct?
So how it works is that they don't save us in fees or create for us a higher return on an investment through a different product or whatnot, then we don't pay until it surpasses fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars. We have done another program like this in the past, if you recall, but it was free. And we received a great return on that investment.
So essentially, what we're saying is it's not going to cost us any more money?
No.
Period. I mean, we stand to gain.
That's correct.
But not lose.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions? Here are none, I will call up a question. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Next item for your attention this evening is a notification of funding offer. The Soil and Water Conservation Department has received and been awarded a stream degree removal grant in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. We proactively reached out to Griot Construction, and they have agreed to perform at the same rate that they performed our last stream degree removal contract at four ninety-six per linear foot. This amount of money and that rate will gain us another five point one four miles of creek that can be snagged. So this is an annual program that the state is funding that our Soil and Water Conservation District is staying active in to keep our stream clean.
Do we know where it's going to, is it going to start?
It'll get us to Hookin'.
Is it going to start where it left off?
Where it left off.
Yeah, on stream. Okay. Good deal.
It'll get just about to Hookin' and all that.
Good deal.
Move to approve, Ms. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I saw that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of that motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a board appointment for the Green County Board of Public Health. I've been informed that they received one application. Their board voted on it at their last meeting to recommend the appointment of Mr. Tyrone Sutton Jr. I believe his application is attached.
It is.
Move to approve, Ms. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second, sir? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Next item for your attention this evening is a budget amendment for the Social Services Department. A budget amendment is requested to add funds to the Contracted Services Account, DSS. I talked to Ms. Amanda Smith about being the next department head in our mentorship program, and she was excited for the opportunity. I've reached out with Ms. Suzanne Gray, and she has obliged the request and upon your approval. We've already got the DSS Board approval and Amanda's approval. Ms. Suzanne Gray will begin this program with that department's leadership form.
How long does this last?
Ninety days.
Ninety days. Okay. Move to approve, Ms. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Is that a nay? Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Next item for your attention this evening is the proposed mass gathering ordinance. We've had this mass gathering ordinance on the agenda our past few meetings. If you recall, the July fifteenth meeting and August fifth meeting, recommendations for change and improvement were made. Two of the four requests and recommendations were made. Any formatting issues, spelling, grammar, we tried to present you with the most complete ordinance that we could concerning mass gathering. If you recall, the intent of the ordinance was to establish a safe and structured process for the permitting of these mass gatherings. Are there questions?
Everything we've got in listed right here, this is going to be enforceable and this district attorney is going to be able to share in the court, whatever.
We believe so, yes. From my conversations with the district attorney's office, they, um, they can make no promises and guarantees that every case will be a winner, but they are willing to work with us and assist us in enforcing.
And we got an order to decibelize, right?
We do. We will have to get sound meters that can be calibrated and certified, but that is not, um...
That's for the noise, though.
That's for the noise, yes.
This is the mass gathering, and the noise would be a subset or portion of that, but just the proposed mass gathering is what I'm asking for first.
Right. The noise amendment's the next. I don't...
Correct.
Yes.
Move to approve, Ms. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve the mass gathering ordinance. Have a second. Any further discussion? I will say that it's a work in progress and, um, and that we can make adjustments if we need to.
Yes, probably.
And, you know, you know, it's not cast in concrete. Here are no further discussions. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is that proposed noise ordinance, and that is an amendment. We currently have a noise ordinance that we, uh, even in the recent past, have looked at in updating. We chose not to at that time with the proposed mass gathering ordinance that was just passed. We thought it was another opportunity to look into this. I heard some requests from the Board of Commissioners, so the attorney and I took a deep dive into this, and a lot of jurisdictional cooperation is going to take place. The attorney worked it out with the district attorney's office and law enforcement on how we can work with them most effectively to make this a enforceable ordinance. Some of the changes that had to take place were making this a twenty-four-hour noise ordinance, which means seventy decibels is the level according to the sound meter. That we will say anything over that is a nuisance. And there are rules on how we will measure that, the threshold for the decibels, the twenty-four hours. It really just modernizes the ordinance for enforcement. Are there questions?
Move to approve, Ms. Chairman.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are no further discussions. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Last item on your agenda is a, it's actually a budget ordinance amendment. It's a fee schedule addition in the Health Department. The Director of Public Health sent some literature this past week about the request to add a fifty-dollar inspection fee for migrant labor camp septic inspections. This would be an annual inspection, and it was, it was approved at their most recent Board of Health meeting, September tenth. Are there questions?
Explain this to me, Ms. Brock.
Well, I'm here with me.
Yeah.
This is Kevin Whitley. He is one of our registered environmental health specialists. No, I won't.
Four town or four town?
He's one of my contractors, Mark Sumpis.
Four.
Okay. A migrant labor camp inspection, we're just looking at the septic system to make sure that it's not failing, that there hasn't been any damage over the septic tank or distribution box. Like I said, we don't go in the house or take any look at the camp itself. It's just a visual inspection of the septic system before the migrants move in. Now, for decades, we haven't charged, but there were a few counties in the state that were charging, and the, uh, North Carolina On-Site Water Protection Section, which is the septic system part of environmental health, said, look, you can't charge. They said, well, we think we can, so they had the AG's office review the law and determine that the counties could charge a fee. It's very similar to what we do for existing mobile homes. So our existing septic systems for mobile homes, so if you're going to move a mobile home off and move another one on, we have to inspect it to make sure, one, it's not failing or it's anything damaged. So basically, it's just a fee, a nominal fee to cover the county's cost of having us go out, do the paperwork, because we do have to process the paperwork and send it to the Department of Labor.
Okay. With the Department of Labor, they send somebody out to inspect these trailers?
Yes, sir.
Water?
Yes, sir. Uh, now, if it is on a...
Well, water?
Yes, sir. If it is on a well, then we sample it. I think there's only four migrant camps in Green County that are well.
And well water. Everybody else is on county.
It's just a basic bacteriological sample. It's not like a full chemical analysis of inorganics. Just a basic sample.
So we don't charge for that?
All right. If you're going to go out to the labor camp and everything looks good, we're going to charge him fifty dollars.
Yes, sir.
And I can see you going out, and he had a problem, I charge him fifty dollars.
Yeah.
But these guys don't have no problem. They must have done a good job, a really good job.
Yes, sir.
But I, I just can't see charging. As far as you got enough problems, it is dealing with labor and the price of labor and paying for everything else they have to pay to get them up here, so...
When you go out, who has to pay? Who, who has to pay them? We do? The county?
As far as, yes, the county covers the cost to send the environmental specialists out to inspect it. So, and like I say, we've been doing it for decades. It's your decision. It's just to cover the county's cost as it is right now.
What's it cost to the county?
Well, as far as the processing, the application, paying for the environmental specialists to go out and then sending it to the Department of Labor.
And putting effort and the labor of the staff to do it, the contractor staff.
And you can start that at the beginning of each season?
Yes, sir. And usually, we start seeing the migrant labor camp inspections in the fall and to the first of the year. And I think, Joy, we check, we have a hundred and six camps around in the, our county, so...
And I did, I did call it, well, I didn't call around. I emailed, um, all the local health departments, and I had someone that responded back, and the two closest to us, Lenora County actually charges a hundred dollars, and Wayne County actually charges fifty dollars. So I, I did look around and see. Just wanted to make sure we weren't...
If they complain, we're going to send them to you.
Yeah.
Move to approve, Ms. Chairman.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I spoke to Joel this morning. Uh, I think it did strip out to the Board of Health. I'll wait a second.
What did he say?
Is there anything? Should go back to Board of Health. Board of Health voted on it the other night to pass it. It's already been voted on by the Board of Health.
Okay. Any further discussion?
We could always go back and change this, yeah.
You would just do another budget ordinance amendment and take it from the fee schedule?
Right.
You would forgive, and then you have to tell me if you wanted to forgive anyone who was charged in the window of time when it was in effect. It's just paperwork.
You said you got response from Wayne County and Lenora?
Wayne and Lenora were the two closest surrounding us that responded back that they are charged.
Pitt did respond back. Wilson, I don't know if they responded back.
So the fifty dollars is not the total of cost, the cost of the county nobody, right?
No.
You got the administration on the county?
Depending on how many inspections could be done, fifty dollars that the county is paying the contractor that we would charge back to the, um, migrant camp person or head wouldn't nearly cover all our costs. It would just be a reimbursement for the effort, for the labor and the inspection at that time, correct?
The paperwork, remember, you own the...
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it wouldn't make us whole by any means, but it is a service we provide.
Well, I mean, it's much cheaper than it would if they had to pay for the all, the whole cost of, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Yes.
It may not be a bad idea if you sit down and figure it out, all the costs. That's what I'm talking about there.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. We've had discussion. Is there any further discussion? I'll call up a question. You know, further discussion. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries four to one.
That's all I have for this evening, sir. Thank you.
Madam, county attorney, have you pearls of wisdom for us tonight?
I want, Kyle, I want you to, uh, you know, there's a lot of question about Roy Van?
Yes.
And you, that rate only a little bit now, or you want to do it?
Yeah, I, thanks for asking, Commissioner Shackleford. Uh, in the office, we have heard some people questioning about broadband in certain areas of the county. And, you know, I think the commissioners have taken a very proactive approach in taking advantage of any and every grant opportunity possible that the state of North Carolina has issued and, um, I think we've also worked well with a lot of the providers. I know that currently, we have two great grants that we are part of, and I think I include those in our managerial notes monthly. Let's see. I think the county's contribution in those two grants combined is four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars investment now. There's a grant coming online in September, a CABD grant, which is creating access to broadband, and the state has amended some of their rules for counties that invested heavily in the great grants, like we did, to where we can use Stock Gap funding, which is a third grant they have, to cover the county's portion of the second grant, which is the CABD, Community Access to Broadband. So in September, I've signed the county up to receive a five million dollar project. Now, Trey and I will work through those variables at the direction of the state. We'll be at the table, but who is still... But don't let me digress too much, Commissioner Shackleford. When that five million dollars is, five million dollar project is... The county will have over eleven million dollars in open broadband expansion grants in Green County. Now, I can't tell you off the top of my head how many households that will serve, but what I know is, even compared to our water sewer infrastructure grants, that the broadband grants, grant total is higher than the water sewers. It's our, it's the, um, I guess it would be the function that we are investing most heavily in at this time. And mind you, a lot of it's grant money, but it would be, the total project amounts are higher than even water sewer are at this point. So it is something we are giving a lot of attention to. Now, if you want numbers and more details like that, I would ask that you give me a little time in the office, and there's a really smart fellow, Jeffrey Brooks, who I spoke to last... who I spoke to last week. It was about that CABD grant. But we can have a call with him, answer any and all questions you may have to ease your mind or whatnot. I just know that we are being as active and proactive in this as we can, trying to make sure that we don't get lost in the digital divide.
Well, I know there are some parts of the kind of people, citizens, think that we're just not doing enough. And, you know, they don't understand that what we are doing, and...
Yeah.
So, I think we need to try to make it clear to them really what we are doing.
You know, maybe we can put out a nice post on the Facebook about what all we are doing. Maybe show them so that they can see some of the same facts and data that we see about how proactive we are being when it comes to making sure that broadband, high-speed broadband is being pushed out through the community, the cooperation taking place with the providers, et cetera. It's no easy task in a rural county, but we are, we're giving it our best shot. It would be my opinion that we are further ahead than many counties, not the farthest ahead, but we're further ahead than many.
Will give us an update on Spectrum?
Yeah, Spectrum is the ARDOF, which is, can't tell you the acronym in a second. Actually, I think I've got...
You're pretty good at that, correct?
Well, hold on a second. I might have it right here, but give me just a second.
There's an awful lot to this broadband that inhibits services, in my opinion. When an entity uses a footprint for their application, they've got that footprint. That's there. Another entity cannot go into their footprint and provide services. And we get into that in rural counties, and there are eighty-five rural counties in the state. We get into that, and that's a prohibiting factor.
So, ARDOF is the FCC Rural Digital Opportunity Fund Grant. If you can see, I know it's probably small, all the diagonally shaped blue lines, that is the county's ARDOF area. So, if you see all the green splotches, that is the county's, that's part of the county that has been awarded great grant, state-funded, okay? The green dots are the actual locations, okay? So, any area that is tan can be improved with a great grant, and any area that is blue, the little hexagon-looking things, that is going over the density, whether it be low density or high density. And if we review these numbers while we got this pulled up, percent unserved but eligible in our, in our county is six point six four percent, Mr. James T. That's six hundred and fifteen total locations of, what's, what do we have, ten thousand residences, homes?
Probably close to it.
Okay. Percent underserved but eligible, none. So, percent with fiber broadband available, fifty, I'm going to round up to fifty-four percent, and I'm going to round up to five thousand total locations. Percent with DSL or fixed wireless only, forty percent. I'll round up to forty-one percent, and that's three thousand seven hundred and eighty-four total locations. And then it says forty-one percent with a broadband subscription, and it says percent with no internet access. It does say twenty percent. Now, I don't know if that is, I don't know how the ARDOF is counted in there, because I know you actually live in an ARDOF area, and you don't have that service yet. But I will say, in speaking with Jeffrey Brooks the other day, he did say that Spectrum, Charter Spectrum, had to give updates as to how far along they were in their project, and they had to meet certain thresholds to maintain qualification, and they have been meeting them. They have to be done by, I believe it was December of 2027. So, I was probably all over the place, but off the cuff, that's what I have to provide. As Benny said, it's a lot harder than you think.
It is.
There's a lot more to this, but we are giving it a good...
If you were living in this area up here, you're out of luck.
Well, anything that's that diagonal, that diagonal blue.
That whole part up there.
Yeah. It actually goes through a lot of the county.
That's a part that they talk about with, to that ten-year lease bond of the credit.
That's right.
That's what I'm about.
So, it is very complex, and it's regrettable, but it is as it is.
It is, but, you know, a lot of people may go to Starlink.
Starlink has done a good job.
Yep.
How about Harvest Bean? Do you ever hear anything out of them?
I haven't heard from them in quite a while.
I haven't either.
But I'd imagine they'll have a product offering they'd like us to take a look at when it comes to reviewing the CABD grant. But like you said, Harp, Starlink is a good solution.
It's doing a good solution.
The county actually utilizes that at the Landfill Public Works Building up on Fire Tower Road, I believe.
Our church is there.
Free Union Church uses it too, and people are very pleased with it. There is a cost associated with that service, but, but anyway. Like again, James, I was all over the place, but does that answer your question?
Yeah, it should, yeah, answer. You know, trying to help people understand better than walking away with nothing.
Better than being, that's right.
Yeah, so, and that's all we can do.
And really...
It's not that we're not trying.
Yeah, in reality, I'm really proud of, you know, the commitment you guys have made to expanding the broadband in the county.
The reality is that if we indeed do have about eighty percent served in aggregate and twenty percent underserved or non-served.
Yeah.
Starlink is doing a great job, and that's, that may be a part of the solution there. But it's statewide. Out of eighty-five rural counties, all rural counties have the same situation.
Yeah. Like I said, I don't think we're the best, in the best shape, but we are far from the worst. And with the participation, continued participation that we've been providing and giving, we'll be fully covered sooner than later.
You know, like five, six years ago, we were like sixty percent, and now we're like twenty percent. Don't have it on that, so that's a huge chunk. You know, we had a fire call a couple weeks ago, I called them and phoned, and that's right there. Let me tell you, I was sitting there on my phone overnight, we had some state overnight. I'm telling you, it's bad.
I've noticed that up there, and there are businesses up there as well as residences.
The point is, we have come a long way from like sixty percent to twenty percent.
We have. And I was, I would guess maybe ten thousand residences.
That's what sounds right.
It was around seven, it was around eight thousand water meters when we first started with the water programs twenty, twenty years ago. Madam Attorney, I don't think you got a chance to answer my question. Do you have any pearls of wisdom for us?
Only that in my discussions with the district attorney's office and with the sheriff, we do anticipate that with regards to the noise ordinance, the most important thing will be education. The first call out for a violation is just a warning, and we expect just people need to be aware, and once they're aware, there will not be a great demand.
It's a change. Agreed. We'd like to make a couple of comments. Very proud to announce that Green Central High School was recognized as a model STEM school of distinction at the North Carolina State Board of Education meeting. We've had over ten years of STEM schools in Green County, and just simply stated that a big accolade to all involved in helping us amass and achieve this amazing accomplishment. It's quite an accomplishment for the county. Would also like to say that our senior citizen center is going to be busy this month. That's an understatement. And they've had several things already this month, but our senior game state finals competition will be the eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, and thirtieth for the state games. On the twenty-fifth, the senior citizens are going to have dinner on the grounds. There'll be some more detail to be announced later. On the twenty-third through the twenty-seventh is Spirit Week, and they're going to dress up out there. So, on the twenty-third, they're going to do Wacky Tacky, whatever that is. On the twenty-fourth, a Disney character. On the twenty-fifth, Old Time Country. I said that real good. On the twenty-sixth, Team Spirit and Team Jersey Night Day. And on the twenty-seventh, Dress Like a Pirate Day, for the pirates that used to live on Contentier Creek, and they used to tack all the boats when they came by and steal all the cartilage, I guess, you know, so. And also, the finale as far as the senior citizens events this month, we on the twenty-eighth, that's our fall fundraiser. They're going to have an open house at twelve o'clock. And then the Cow Pie Jackpot, which is a total payoff of one thousand dollars in cash prize on the cow patty process. That will be on the twenty-eighth, so. Senior Citizens Center, our Center of Excellence, is going to be busy this month. Has been and will continue to be busy. Are there any other announcements by Commissioner's recommendations?
September twenty-first, Homewoodville Freewill Baptist Church will be having their harvest festival, barbecue chicken for lunch, hot dogs before the auction. October the fourth, Homewoodville Freewill Baptist Church will be having the annual golf tournament at Cutter Creek. October the eleventh, Free Union will be having their annual golf tournament at Cutter Creek.
Yep. If you got some more announcements, go ahead and talk about them, because I'm trying to hear this rain hitting this roof up here. We don't need to leave you right now. Any other announcements?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Motion and a second to adjourn, any further discussion? If there are none, those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.